Okay, with the hour being after seven, we'll open a meeting of August fifteenth, Planning Board, first item, July eighteenth minutes. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussions? Nope, beating their be in on, all is in favor?
Aye.
All right, next thought you, we got a few minutes before the hearing, we have an A and R. Don't get this dirty, because that's a good one. Okay.
That's what I'm thinking.
I think it's candy on my. All right, we have an A and R for school and Maple, and.
Rich Leslie with Bay Conic Group, and I'm representing Ed Sheeran Dominican. The A and R is between ninety-nine and one oh one School Street. What's happening is ninety-nine, which is parcel two thirty, is going to deed parcel A to one oh one. What that's going to do, two fifty, which is one oh one, currently is a pre-existing nonconforming in terms of frontage and sideline setback. Them picking up parcel A, they'll now have a hundred feet of frontage, so it'll meet that, and it'll also meet the sideline setback. The second part of this is that the one oh one parcel is going to cut off a rear piece, which is shown as parcel B, and that's going to be deeded over to Utah Realty Trust. Both parcels, at the end of the day, will have frontage, sufficient area, meet setback requirements, and that's pretty much it.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the plan with Mr. Leslie prior to him submitting it. We're all set.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
So parcel A, no, go ahead. So parcel A is going to be combined.
With the one oh one parcel, which is parcel, it's parcel two fifty.
That'll make it conforming.
That'll make that conforming for frontage and sideline setback, correct?
Any other questions? Make a motion to endorse?
I have one question. Sorry. No, it's not going to be nonconforming. Well, it's not conforming in the setback. Parcel two thirty doesn't meet either setback side or front.
No, it's, well, it doesn't mean, it depends if you call which ones, if you want to call Maple Street side. You're right, it's a pre-existing nonconforming parcel.
Either one, right.
And we're not touching that.
Right, well, you're reducing it.
Well, we are with terms of area, but we're not making the setbacks any worse than they already are.
Okay. Okay.
All set? All right. No other questions to make a motion to endorse?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both, same. I'm not a long way. Look, they're chewing gum, I'd fall over, so easy. Wait, you check this through the game, huh? Is that where you want to get going? Really? Mike, you don't throw it. Yeah, come on.
My chair's messed up.
It's because Kate stole it.
She stole my chair?
Yeah, she was going around picking, she was like, who's the one picking the best?
No, I didn't pick the best.
The goalie lost. She just went around, no, this one's no good, this one's no good.
I'm sitting like, oh, that shit doesn't bother me that way. Yeah, the bag is sore. Go switch it down here. Do like. Kate, now I found the button. Oh, I found it.
Yes?
There we go. Not bad.
Pass that on to the police.
All set?
Okay, we already set the bond for drumhead, right? I mean, set the money, right?
Yep, we just accepted it, it's tripartite.
Can't even see who the bank is.
It is next to Kate.
Do you know?
I'm sorry?
Looking tripartite. Let me just see the bank.
No, did you see it?
No?
Yeah, I see that.
Wow.
Boy, that's small.
But it's, it doesn't even say who. Is he even signed?
One local.
Oh, one local?
Yep.
Okay. And authorized signature, okay. Did they put how much on here? No? Oh, there is thirty-six grand. Okay. Make a motion to accept the tripartite amount of thirty-six thousand dollars for drumhead way.
Second.
A second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. All right, Kate?
Or just sign it, John.
Hmm?
Or just sign.
You're sure?
Yeah, that page.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's probably not anymore. There you go.
I didn't get a, um, I found my phone, so I didn't have an application. Did you find it? Was it carbon, I think? Because you got it last time, you got it June. Oh, so it's in my car. Because I just took it out.
Yeah, it was in June.
Okay.
And they continue to deliver us one.
Okay.
On six twenty, I believe.
All right, ready for the next one?
No. I'm sorry?
No, thank you.
For the next. This is.
Do you want to do the American? Want to submit your high plane?
Why is he here?
Yeah, Dan's out back.
All right, come on up, Danny, I'll get you out of here.
Do you need a minor modification? Not the plane?
No.
All right, from what you submitted to us, you're looking for determination of a major or minor for one seventy-three high plane, correct?
Correct.
And what you said in the letter was you're moving the front door.
Two different topics, yeah. So one is, we had two doors in the building, one on the side, one on the front. The front door was, no one was going to use it. All the parking's on the side, and the main entrance was always here, so the applicant would like to eliminate the front door, replace it with more windows, and then this would all just become more landscaping. And the second request is to take three of the parking spaces and make a three bay parking garage at the back of the property. The owner, the new owner of the property intends to occupy the commercial space on the first floor, and he would use the garage. There's twenty-five parking spaces, sixteen of those are designated for the residential uses, the other nine are for the commercial use, which is the minimum per zoning, and frankly, way more than is needed for the site. The other benefit here is that this provides some additional screening to the single family home to the rear.
Okay. All right, I'll start with John, for two issues.
See, there's a entrance to the back on the ground floor also, is that correct?
Yeah, there was always an entrance here, so there are two entrances to the building here and here, this one from the rear parking, this one from the side parking.
So I don't think that's an issue. I would consider adding a new building as a major modification. Not only is it bigger than a standard, a sort of accessory building, it's thirty feet tall.
So the owner has some cars that he collects, so he was planning on putting a lift in one or more of the bays and being able to store the cars up above the parking space. That's why it's thirty feet tall.
Storage of cars allowed in business?
Personal car of the owners.
He's storing, what, antiques and stuff?
Yeah, I guess he has a collectible car.
Yeah, but that's not, that would be a whole separate permit. This is.
Okay. So we could say he's not going to do that, you could condition that.
Okay. But what do you think, John, major, minor?
I think major, it's adding a new building, and it's not a shed or anything.
Okay.
It's twenty by, twenty-five by thirty feet tall according to the plan.
All right.
Couldn't we, Mr. Chairman, just get thoughts on the two issues separately, in case one you think is a minor and the other?
I consider the removal of the door minor.
Okay, thank you.
Would there be any hazardous material, chemicals stored in the?
Just the parking.
The parking, yeah. And just one small suggestion on the front, moving the front door, maybe you might have a sign there, entrance on the side or something, that may never be a problem, but it's not a big thing. I guess I'd go with a major too, maybe, just because it is a little bigger, it's on the borderline with me.
For the garage?
The garage, yeah.
And the front door?
The front door is no problem, yeah.
Okay.
I feel the same way, the door's no issue.
Okay.
But the building's a major.
Okay.
Hey, Paul?
Yeah, I echo the previous comments.
Okay. I'm the same way, the only question is, I'm sure you've already checked it out with the building inspector, right?
Yes.
You can do this.
Yes.
All right, so you'd be considered a minor for the door and a major for the garage.
Okay. So what's the procedure? I haven't done a minor modification in quite some time.
You just send it in to us next time, and we just go yay?
Okay, so I'll take the garage off, and I'll send you the plan with the front door change.
Yeah, you can do it with, if you refile the garage at the same time, it doesn't matter.
I think I'll do them separately.
All right, the first one says.
Yeah.
And the second one, yeah, you got to do all the things, so.
I drove up to back Highland Street, which is behind the lot there.
Back here?
Yeah, because I was going to say, thirty feet thing, it's going to stand out forever, but I can't even see the building. I'm surprised that I couldn't actually see the building, because there's enough trees in the way as the bus.
So I know that the new owner has talked to the gentleman who owns this property, he's in favor of this here. I don't know if that makes a difference to you, if he were to get that in writing, if that makes any difference to you all?
Valid point for when you do come forward, yeah.
Yeah, there's a support, yeah, I agree, John. It's not going to change our mind, but just, because you never know what a butler wants or so on, okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks, Dan. All set?
Thank you, appreciate you taking me early. Thank you.
Did he pay that extra?
Excuse me?
Did he pay that extra? We got eight items or less added cost.
Don't tell him, do you?
Yes.
All right, now, we're a little late, but anyway, carbon, that's a continued, correct?
It was continued, opened only to continue.
Okay.
Yeah, just so that you know, we have plans that went out back in June, and then they brought in revised plans that I haven't heard from many people, but.
Okay.
I thought it was taken, sorry.
Okay. We have a continued public hearing for Site Plan twenty-four oh four for carbon and a special permit at seven eleven, twenty-four oh five, as was continued from whenever, uh, June twentieth. With that being said, the applicant, and I wasn't here, but I'm not going to mull it, so I'm not going to, I will, I'm not going to vote, I don't believe in mulling, but we'll be part of the meeting.
You don't have to, because it wasn't, we didn't discuss it.
Yeah, I know, it's still, I'm still not a hundred percent on that one either, just in case someone challenges, so. Now, introduce yourself, so everybody sees your smile and face.
Sure. My name is Chris Cabral from Crosman Engineering, I'm here on behalf of the owner and applicant, G W Hilltop.
Okay. All right, what Kate just said was, you had original plans, got all sent out, she had comments back, which I guess are here tonight, but you revised some plans, and they got sent out, so you just brought them, we haven't heard anything on those. So you can, if you want to go with the original, we can hear that, and then when you get the comments back from the other boards.
We do have cows on the revised.
Okay, we have cows, but, you know, you still got to hear from Border Health Fire, if anything's changed. So there will be, have to be another hearing just to catch up, because you're going to need those comments on the revised plans.
Right. The purpose of the re-submission was because we did get all of those comments in, and so much time has gone by since we submit three and a half months ago, that it felt appropriate to present what we currently have rather than our products.
Well, one other thing, I'm sure you know you're in the business, if I get a bunch of plans and another, you just usually go, all right, and another set of the same, it's a lot of them, I'm sure, just sitting there, so. Might behoove you after tonight is just make sure, explain what happened.
Sure.
And email them, make a quick of what you changed.
Yes, in our, in our transmitter letter that we included with our submission, we outlined the changes, they were minimal in substance in terms of what we're proposing. The biggest one would have just been widening the circulation aisle around the rear of the site from twelve feet to twenty feet for the fire department. Otherwise, what we submit back in May is essentially unchanged from what we are preparing, are presenting tonight.
Okay.
So that is kind of the gist of the difference.
Okay, since I wasn't here, did you guys do anything, or just, just continued?
All right.
Didn't even do the plans or anything? All right, so this is your first night?
Yes, this is our first.
So opening night delayed one hearing.
Yeah, a few rainbow days.
Okay.
All right, I'll start from the top. The property is located at twenty-two eighteen, Boston Providence Turnpike, Route one. The site's on the east side of Route one in this location, so access.
That helps me, because I was trying to reconcile the twenty-two sixteen.
When, when we had contacted the assessor's office to get an address, they gave us twenty-two sixteen, and then it wasn't until we received our first engineering review that the address that Carl gave us is twenty-two eighteen, so I apologize for that discrepancy.
Which is correct?
Twenty-two eighteen, according to Carl.
Mr. Chairman, we assign the addresses under town by law. It's twenty-two eighteen, not twenty-two sixteen.
Reserve the right to change your mind at some time, Carl?
No.
It's more fun when Maggie did it, it'll be a two-week study. All right, sorry.
No, that's all right. The site's located on the east side of Route one, which means access and egress is only available through Route one northbound. The site is about two and a half acres in size, and it is mostly just a maintained lawn area with an existing billboard easement at the northwest corner, fronting on Route one. And the only other feature of interest on the property is a thirty-inch drainage waterfall from the Hilltop and Sunset Road drainage systems, which discharge runoff from the streets and several abutting properties. Oh, sorry, my laptop just asleep. Onto our site today. So our site is essentially a flat lawn with like a foot deep, sort of like a detention area for stormwater, just sheet flow out to the site, infiltrate into the soil today, so very little runoff leaves the site under existing conditions. We submit for a site plan review application and an application for special permit. The purpose for the special permit application is because our site's located in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, Area Three. The bylaws allow for a maximum of up to fifteen percent impervious coverage, but due to the proposed impervious coverage of fifty-three point four percent, a special permit is needed in order to authorize or allow for that exceedance of the fifteen percent threshold. The owner is proposing a luxury vehicle warehouse. The site's located in the Highway Business District, and the warehouse use is an allowed use. Based on the gross floor area of the proposed building, twenty-nine off-street parking spaces are required, which we provide. We would provide ten by eighteen and a half foot spaces with twenty-four foot aisles along the, we have twenty-four foot aisles along the front of the building, and on the right of the building in plan view, which is the northeast. At the time we originally submit our plans, we had proposed twelve-foot wide rear drive aisles for circulation around the building. We narrowed it down to twelve to try to reduce impervious on-site, knowing that we are in a WRPOD. But one of the comments that we got back from the fire department was that they want to see twenty feet, and so that's the biggest change that has occurred to our site plans since our initial submission back in early May. One thing I noted earlier was that there is an existing thirty-inch drainage waterfall that discharges runoff on-site at the bottom right corner of the plan. The proposed stormwater mitigation for the site includes a large infiltration pond. We've done several test pits out there witnessed by Carl. The size of the pond is enough to fully infiltrate all runoff generated on-site from our proposed roof and parking lots, as well as everything upstream off-site for up to the hundred-year storm event without any discharge, according to the cows, and hopefully Carl can sign off on that as well. On the screen is a picture of our drainage and drainage plan, kind of gives you a good, a better perspective of the size of our infiltration basin that we're proposing. We have a series of deep-sump catch basins, piping everything on-site to our infiltration basin. We have an emergency spillway located at the northwest corner of the site, but there's no discharge expected to overtop that through any of the design storm events we're acquired to analyze. The site has access to public water on Route one, so we are going to be coming in with a six-inch fire and a two-inch domestic water. We do not have access to public sewer. However, there is private sewer available on Hilltop, which is owned and operated by the Preserve Business Park. We have been denied access to the private sewer connection, which has forced us to include a septic system on-site. And so on the utility plan you see here, the kind of dark bluish-green rectangular area is where we are proposing our leach field. Prior to, or prior to tonight's hearing, and after we submit, we submit to planning and conservation concurrently at the same time, but we had made our way through the public hearing and review process through conservation a little bit quicker, so we were actually able to have our land disturbance permit issued June twenty-sixth. So following some of the final comments we got through that phase, plus the fire department comments is what encouraged us to submit revised package a month later, on July twenty-sixth. Also with our site plans, we include a lighting package, just showing the typical foot candle spread off all of our lighting fixtures, showing that nothing should provide light shed on abutting property. And we also include a landscaping plan, covering in some trees along the southern property line, which is the abutting parcel for the Preserve Apartment Complex, and we did our best to make a nice aesthetic landscaping design. Along the northeast side of the property, we actually need a retaining wall, running along the, the north, the entire northeast property all the way down to the dumpster, which is located at the southeast corner or the bottom right in plan view. The height kind of varies with, I think, a maximum height of about eight feet for a very short period of time. What else we got? We have our fire truck circulation plan showing snow storage. I believe the only remaining comment we've received from the fire department was pertaining to fire department connection locations, and I believe we've satisfied those. There's a few other comments that we received two days ago for our second planning board review. They consist of correcting the land court certificate information on the cover sheet, updating some survey layout reference on our existing conditions plan, adding notations to our site plan about when the curb opening can be authorized, fixing the location of a water valve on our utility plan, adding the conditions from tonight's hearing onto our plan sheets, adding another condition regarding the mass DOT access permit being required. And there were also two other comments that we got regarding the Water Resource Protection Overlay District requiring information about the storage of hazardous materials on-site. We do, we did not provide a floor plan at this time, but we have one tonight, we could show, showing the location of where our flammable cabinets are going to be and the storage of those materials, but we borderline have households, quantities of vehicle wax and other kind of vehicle cleaning chemicals. The facility itself is essentially like a climate-controlled warehouse for luxury cars, and so clients will come in if they want to store their vehicle in like a humidor for a car, have it detailed, waxed, taken care of. I think that's kind of it, generally for what I've got to say for a brief overview. Any questions?
No, I'm not going to read the comments, so that, you know, we get them out of the way. All right, first one is May twenty-eighth from the Police Department, and they have new traffic safety concerns. Oh, you got one on August eleventh from, same thing, concerns. This is one from the Fire Department, I think you, that you already, oh, I got an updated one.
Yep.
All right. Fire Department will work with the applicant to locate the hydrant and the markings for the fire department, and does one have? Okay with the plans. There's no reason to read the previous one, because it seems like he's taking care of them. What else do we got? Site plan, this is from the Border Health, April, I mean, April, August first, when the plan's going, Kate, the second one?
Maybe the thirtieth.
Okay, so they're before, okay. Now, the Border Health.
Thirtieth, yes.
Yeah, they're eight, one, meeting. You get ready their comments for the, same as the June fourth, they vote unanimously, so you have no concerns, they remind the applicant that they got to submit on the septic construction to them, and also the toxics and hazards waste permits got to be filed with them too. And, does anybody have them cows? I think cow's the only one we have. So Carl, your turn?
Mr. Chairman, I did deliver a review memo to the board dated August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and that superseded my original review, which is dated June twentieth. There were about twenty items on the original review. The plans came in clean to start with, so there weren't that many comments. I agree with Mr. Cabral's summary and said the only thing that really changed between the revisions that was of any substance is the width of the drive aisle around the rear of the, rear of the building. We recognized that also in our, our original review, that the twelve-foot wouldn't fly. It's now twenty-foot. There have been some adjustments to the location of the water and fire services that currently goes behind the building originally and went in the side, and then other details, we've had them switch over their water details to DPW details, so those kind of changes were made as a result of the first review, and it really, right now, the, the comments left are very minor, there's some discussion, a couple of reference, deed reference.
and the storage of those materials. But we borderline have households, quantities of, um, vehicle wax and other kind of vehicle cleaning chemicals. Um, the facility itself is essentially like a climate-controlled warehouse for luxury cars. And so clients will come in if they want to store their vehicle in like a humidor for a car, um, have it detailed, waxed, um, taken care of. Um, I think that's kind of it generally for what I've got to say for a brief overview. Um, any, any questions?
No, I'm not going to read the comments so that, you know, we get them out of the way. All right, first one is May twenty-eighth from the police department, and they have new traffic safety concerns. Oh, you got one on August eleventh from, same thing, concerns. Uh, this is one from the fire department, I think you, that you already, oh, I got an updated one.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, fire department will work with the applicant to locate the hydrant and the markings for the fire department and does one have okay with the plans. There's no reason to read the previous one because it seems like he's taking care of them. Uh, what else do we got? Site plan, this is from the Board of Health. April, I mean, April, August first, when the plans going, okay, the second one?
Um, maybe the thirtieth.
Okay, so before, okay. Now, the Board of Health.
Thirtieth, yes.
Yeah, they're eight, one meeting. We get ready their comments for the same as the June fourth, they vote unanimously, so you have no concerns. They remind the applicant that they got to submit on the septic construction to them and also the toxics and hazards waste permits got to be filed with them too. Uh, and, does anybody have them cows? I think cow's the only one we have. So Carl, your turn.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I did deliver a review memo to the board dated August thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four, um, and that superseded my original review, which is dated June, June twentieth. There were about twenty items on the original review. Um, the plans came in clean to start with, so there weren't that many comments. I agree with Mr. Cabral's, um, summary and said the only thing that really changed between the revisions that was, uh, of any substance is the width of the drive aisle around the rear of the, uh, rear of the building. Um, we recognize that also on our, our original review, that the twelve-foot wouldn't fly. Um, it's now twenty-foot. There have been some adjustments to the location of the water and fire services that currently goes behind the building originally and went in the side. And then other details, we've had them switch over their water details to, uh, DPW details. So those kind of chan- changes were made as a result of the first review. And, um, it really, um, right now, the, the, um, comments left are very minor. There's some discussion, a couple of reference cha- uh, deed reference change or a land court certi- certificate of title on the front cover. Um, I'm having a little debate with, um, Crossman about, um, the status of Route one out there, which is a state highway. Um, uh, there's a confusing layout that was recorded in nineteen ninety-five that refers to it as a town layout, but it's a state layout. You're going to need mass DOT permits in, and that's what some of the other comments are in there and said the water, the water connection permit is in the town's name. We do it, but I'm making clear that all the responsibilities under that permit, including prep of any plans, are the applicant's, they're not ours. Uh, DOT will not issue a water or sewer connection in state highway unless they issue it to the municipality. Um, comparatively, the curb cut will be, permit will also be a DOT permit, but the applicant will obtain that. So anyway, that's the kind of discussion in the memo on August thirteenth. I've also, um, thrown in what you'll see on other jobs, I shouldn't say inserted into the memo, um, the last couple of comments, if we have an aquifer special permit. Mr. Cabral also made reference to that in that I've noted, we want a floor plan to show, uh, and it doesn't have to be provided at this time, um, but we want a floor plan to show where a safety cabinet for the storage of proposed hazardous, quote-unquote hazardous materials will be stored and then a cut sheet for the cabinet so that we, we are able to ensure that chemicals are properly stored for. If there's a leak, it's contained. If there's a fire, it's fireproofed, um, all because it's in the aquifer zone. Um, that's it. If there's any questions, I'd be more than glad to help out.
Paul?
Um, how many cars are going to be in the barn? Or the capacity?
Yeah. Paul Coats with Dario Designs. There'll be approximately, um, forty.
We have, need your name and?
Yeah.
Everything for the record, please.
Paul Coats with Dario Designs. Uh, there'll be approximately, um, thirty-six four-car high storage units for vehicles. And, you know, at the time, as this company progresses, I mean, again, it won't be filled out at the beginning, but we, um, they're expecting that kind of, you know, storage capacity over the next couple of years.
So four cars, stacked cars and thirty-six of those?
Yes.
Okay. And storage only?
Yes.
Is it, when you say detailed services, uh, the detailed services being provided inside the, the barn?
Yeah, so on the plan, the, the bulk of the building is the car storage. There's offices in the front and then in the back, there are two detailed bays for the vehicles.
Bottom right.
And a car wash in the bottom right. So as a client comes in to leave their car for, you know, whatever period of time, the car is washed and then brought into the, uh, storage facility, put on the rack system and then it could be there for weeks or months, depending on the client. When the client comes to pick up their car, it's taken off the rack. Again, it will be just clean so that the customer's picking up a clean car. Uh, so that's, that's the levels of detail for the, the car detailing and car wash. It's not like a, you know, a car wash this and that you see on the main room.
In a case like this, and I don't know much about car barns, um, what's the ventilation like? Like, obviously you have to drive the car in and, right? Drive the car over to its resting?
Mechanical system is, is specified for that, for car storage. So we have an evacuation system for the exhaust and everything.
Where's it being exhausted out to?
Out to, uh, on this drawing, it would be to the left side of the building. We have, uh, all the exhaust goes out where you can see garage exit on that elevation.
Which is, which is, now does that, is the back of the building which faces the Preserve?
Yes.
How about the left side, that left side? Is that, was that, is that blowing down Route one or is that blowing towards, I mean, would that, would that blow towards the Preserve? The exhaust?
The left side?
The left side, yeah. I mean, if it's blowing out the left side?
Yeah, it would go, well, no, it would go toward what used to be Cook's.
Yeah.
Cook's, right, okay. Yeah.
It'll blow up the Foxhole.
Um, I mean, how many cars would you have on at a time? I mean, you just drive one, two?
Introduce myself, sorry. Dario DeMar, I'm the architect of record on this and Paul and I work together.
Okay.
The, the plan is to start off with one row of cars and then the goal is can we get all four rows in over time? And, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. We don't do anything in the warehouse except park the cars and we will wash them in the car wash.
And, but all of that runoff runs into the leaching field?
Yes, except the car wash has a tight tank, so that's all contained and dealt with. That, none of that goes into the leach field.
Okay. All right. I'm good, Jack.
So can you just elaborate a little bit as far as, um, like, is this mostly for cars that are winter, put away for the winter?
Yeah, it's, it's, this is the first car barn, okay?
It's the first one ever?
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of other companies that do it, but for these people, it's their first one. And it's, it's predominantly, um, very expensive cars for the folks. Someone was here talking about a two-story garage. It's for collectors and they're going to drop off their Maseratis and Lamborghinis. There won't be a whole lot of Chevys sitting there. Um, there may be a vintage Corvette or something. So they're going to go to one of their homes somewhere else and they want the car in a conditioned space. You know, the cars get sometimes treated better than some people, but it's, it's just there for them to store it and then they'll call back and say, I'm going to be there in two weeks, we're going to pick it up.
So they're long-term occupancies?
Yeah, it's, and that's, I think that's important to understand too. It's not a parking garage where you drop it off, go to a Patriots game and pick it up. This is strictly long-term.
So is it even manned during regular hours? Is there a need for that?
Um, yes, there's an office there. So if people come in, um, you know, to say, hey, I want to make an appointment, so it'll always be staffed by a person, possibly two, and then the car wash will be there if one of these folks want to get their car cleaned. That are their customers, then they clean them, they prep them, you know, they even take pictures of them before they park them to make sure there's no scratches or to document the scratch. And then, but then when they leave, they, it's kind of like a rental car, you'll sign off on it. It's long-term storage. Some of the real old cars with leather and stuff don't want to be outside in the cold. So this is, it's fully conditioned.
Okay. Um, the only thing on the plan that I questioned at all was the, um, snow storage. So on the snow storage, you had some, and I can't find it now, I'm sorry. Um, so the snow storage on, if, if I'm facing Route one, okay, I'm looking out to Route one, on the left, that piece, would that, you know, it, unless you're up there looking at the sight lines, it's hard to say, but that piece of snow storage that is directly on Route one there, I questioned whether that should go away because it could cause, depending on if we had a winter with, you know, a tremendous amount of snow, it could get high.
Oh, for the sight lines?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could pull that back, sure.
Like on the right-hand side, you don't have, you have, um, you don't have it going out like that. I think you probably should match that.
Okay, so on the, the snow storage that we show on the left side of the driveway?
Do you see what I mean? See how if you were waiting to?
Yeah, how it's kind of trimmed on the right side? Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's, that's an easy fix, absolutely.
That's all I have. Thank you.
And just to, add on that, you have a note there saying that you will take the snow off, off-site if you, if you need to, so that, you know, that's.
Yes, that was actually picked up by Conservation Commission too.
I just have a question on the existing billboard. So is that, is that there per, is it the, you know, you have a variance for, uh, easement, is that there permanently or?
We have no say on the existing billboard. That's an existing easement that, of course, we would like it to go away, but it's a hundred percent out of our control. You buy the property, you have to, all we have to do with them is give them access to it. Would we like it gone? Sure. But it, it's something that came with the property.
So would that be gone and there's a lease up or there's?
No, it's, it's with, it's with, it's a infinite easement that we really, we have zero say in it as the property owners. It's no different than having utility line going through your property that's been there before you bought it and it's going to be there after these guys sell it, unfortunately.
And on, uh, sheet C four, so it looks like there's a berm on the, uh, on the, the southern part of the lot already, so that's, if I read that right.
Um, along the, looking at plan view along the bottom or the left?
Yeah, yeah, along the bottom.
Um, that's a slope coming down from the Preserve to our site.
Okay.
Yeah. And then everything drains in like a, in a westerly direction, which is a, kind of towards the middle of the diagonal property line where you see the, the, the abutting property owner's text information. It's essentially just a big, flat grass area. It's got about a foot deep of, of contours before runoff would just overtop into the downstream of butter.
Yeah, you have your landscaping plan, so it looks like you're going to do a good job landscaping there from what I could see.
That was our rule.
Yeah. Um, and then on sheet C five, um, so I see you did move the, um, one of the handicapped parking spots. I think that was one of the comments that, that Carl had, I think, or, I can't remember them, but, but you did move what it looks like.
If I write closer, am I the right?
Yeah, they're very, they're the closest spaces to the, I guess.
Wrong topic. Sorry about that. I take that back.
Yeah, it's two seventy-two.
But, oh, I said, I had a question on pathway. Yeah. Yeah, so the, the door in would be the door on the right side? Would they go in to, they wouldn't go in the garage entrance to go in?
Uh, so on the plan, it's tough to tell, there's no door icons for the main door that display like this. The main door is actually right here with.
Oh, okay, okay.
Covered underneath the roof.
Okay.
So it's kind of, uh, hidden by the building coloring.
That's my question, was near the, near the handicapped parking space, the door is right near there. Good, okay, that's, that's good. Okay. And, uh.
That's the main entrance.
And we're proposing the sidewalk to be flush with grade two, a two percent pitch from the building down to the back of the parking spot, so.
We did everything universal design, if that matters. It's a little bit exceeding the handicap codes. It's more, it's stricter, so there's no ramps. We bring the parking up to the curb, so you're not really pointing out. Most people go there, we go here. It's a, it's a higher level of, um, kind of inclusion and trying to make everybody fit in, so the ramps are gone, the grab, grab rails are all gone. I don't know if you guys are familiar with universal design, but it's.
No.
It's a higher, it's much more restrictive than the mass handicap codes. And, and the intent, just so you know, because people will probably start doing this, is to not have a we, they. Um, everybody comes in the same entrance. There's not a ramp where they go up. So if you can do less than a five percent grade, then you don't need the grab rails and everything for the wheelchairs. You don't need thirty feet in a landing, thirty. So everybody uses everything the same. You know, you'll make the urinals the same so that people aren't singled out amongst other people because they have a handicap. Everybody comes in the same spot, the same way. So if you bring the parking lot up to the sidewalk for a little bit and then back down, then you don't have to put the curbs with all the dots and all the stuff to say, okay, you guys go over there and us normal people go over here. It's, it's really kind of a cool thing to do and it doesn't have to cost a lot if you think it through.
Yeah. I don't mean to go off, I got to ask this question. You said the urinals eventually would be universal for everybody, right?
Right.
What about the stalls?
You try to, um, you'll have a larger handicap stall, but you won't have all of them be five by ten. It, that gets cost prohibitive, but wherever you can.
I like my five by ten.
Pardon?
I like the big one.
Well, and, and, and you, we have those, but, but what happens then too is you'll have your counters and your sinks and bathroom all be the same height.
Yeah.
So there's not one spot for people. Wherever it's practical, you try not to do a real burden on the building owner, but there's so many things that you can do that everybody can use to try to just eliminate that pointing out of, of, you know, whatever disability they may have.
But you're still going to have the ADA tiles though, right?
Yeah, you have to have, everything is minimum what, what the handicap code requires, but we go beyond it. We meet or exceed it in all cases and universal, in many cases exceeds it.
And my last comment, just on the, and I, I know we're, I'm actually reading, we're looking at the new plan. Um, so just on the, on the cover sheet, it might be good to put the other date of the revised plan. I know it's on the revisions on the right side, but it's, you know, it's good to have it more prominent. You have March twenty twenty-four, when it's reading now August.
I need to watch the.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you mind if I do that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so on the, on the cover of the plan?
Yes.
On the bottom, you have March twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
And you have the revisions over on the right.
Yes.
But it might be good putting on the bottom what the latest revision is.
As.
Forward letter, so it's very clear.
As unusual as that seems, this is typical for me, but we can, we can stop that on it.
It's the issue date of the plans, the revisions are on the right.
Yeah. So you're saying it should be March?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because don't we often put on revised, you know, we have a whole set of dates?
Oh, some put the revision in the title block as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually we include the initial preparation date as the main feature and then the revision's just kind of tucked away title block, unfortunately.
But I think it was a good plan and, uh, you know, thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Um, question concerning detailing, is that something the, against the group does cars prior to their pickup, or is that something the owners of the cars do within your, uh?
The building.
Your detail.
The applicant takes care of that. So if you come in and you want your car detailed, we'll detail it. If you don't want it detailed, we'll typically at least wash it and store it.
Okay, so they, it's, uh, some of them, they'll ask for you to do the detailing?
Right.
Okay. So would that be the one person who's on duty or do you bring in extra staff?
There's people there that will do that.
This is always multiple people.
Yeah, it'll be staffed for that. Yeah, the, the parking requirements here that we have are probably three times, four times what we need because it's not like there's going to be eight people there dropping off their cars. You may have one or two customers and one or two employees, so you got four people. There's a lot of spaces, but, you know, the, in case a different function came in, those make sense. With us, it's a lot more than we'll need because the frequency of people coming in to store a car for four months and that person comes back four months later, as opposed to a normal parking garage, if you will, where they're coming in every ten minutes.
Um, someone referenced thirty-six four-car high stacks.
Correct.
So do you actually have the cars layered on top of one or other?
Yes.
Or like, in like shelving type of?
Yes.
So you must have some big forklifts or something.
Pardon?
Must have some big forklifts to put them up?
No, no, it, it, it's an automatic, the lifts have their own lift built into them. So you drive in and that platform goes up and you push a button and the next one goes up. And they use these a lot in parking lots in big cities. Um, ours obviously doesn't have to be as fast because someone's going to call up two weeks ahead of time instead of wanting their car in two minutes. So to get the car on the top, you got to take the three cars below it out, but that's, it's not a big deal because it's not a time crunch. Um, but they're all, um, self-powered. Each stack has its own.
Uh, hydraulic?
Pardon?
Hydraulic in nature then? Is that an issue with the toxic?
It's all self-contained. We went through the fire department with all this. Um, there's sprinkler systems all, everything's all built in and it all ties into the, to the main sprinkler, the whole building is sprinkler, um, as are the racks, um, by code. Yeah, they're a pretty common thing used for parking garages, not as much long-term storage. So it's a very proven technology. We're just using it a different way.
I'm just worrying now because it's in the water protection area, is there?
There's spill containment and there's tight tanks. There's spill containment and there's tight tanks. Yep. Good question. Can Noah like their cars?
No?
Nope. Fire department and us. Fires are possible to put out once they ignite.
Locust map is supposed to be what, one to two hundred max? Am I correct? Locust map is supposed to be one to two hundred max?
I don't think we have that on our site plan.
Yeah, tiny little one up the top here.
It does say two hundred.
Here?
Oh, I met in the
Oh, yeah, it does, yeah. Now you got the aerial views. You could expand upon that perhaps, so it'll be clearer what your where your site is located. Okay.
Elsa?
Yeah.
All right, a few questions. You talked about runoff, all right? What's it coming over from the preserve?
The preserve actually has its own drainage system which sends everything to the southeast.
So what's coming on to you guys from where?
Pretty much all the properties that are on Sunset on both the north end and south sides of it. To the right side of the plan view, it's all wooded right now, but that's actually the recently built up Dry Creek site. So when we did the, we actually did the design of the Dry Creek sites. We have a good take on what's happening out there. And so runoff from Dry Creek, mostly retained on site during the hundred year only little escapes. But we watersheded that whole area and pretty much the the western perimeter and the northern perimeter of the Preserve Park is what dumps its way onto our site, so.
It's modeled that way.
Yeah, but they shouldn't have been allowed to do it, right? You can't dump your water on someone else's property.
But Preserve, well, first of all, that's the way it was to start with. Sunset's old.
Oh, I understand Sunset's old.
And Preserve put some of their own water on their own property. Now they're selling it or they sold it.
They sold what?
This came out of the Preserve.
Oh.
My understanding, there's been a few developer attempts at this lot, but I think stormwater was a big issue, but.
That's interesting, Cal. First I heard of it. So did they have to go back and modify their forty B or they can just do what they want?
I think it was a separate lot in the original approval.
But it was part of the approval? If it's shown on the plan, it's part of the approval.
I I guess. I don't think it was actually in the ad approval, Jack.
Okay.
I mean, that one was kind of in between when I was here first time and the second time. Not kind of, it was, all right? But we looked at that because we were surprised it was a standalone lot.
Okay. Mr. Cook was here, he'd be filling this in.
Time moves on, Jack.
I know, but he did have some good insight. Uh, second is you're parking cars there? I don't want, you might wanna get interpretation from the building inspector. To me, this is not, this is more like warehouse storage. So when you say warehouse storage, I don't care if you're storing socks there or missiles or cars. If you start saying you're parking cars there, it goes just like the guy before you. He said you're parking, you're parking cars. It assumes that you're parking cars for the use of the building as opposed to be storage. You might wanna ask his interpretation, so and call it what you want so you don't get stuck down the road. This is a warehouse. So. Next question I had, I look, I was looking through the parking calculations. I always thought we had something for warehouses, but we don't, Cal, do we?
No, it's it's parking code five.
I know, but you read parking code five, it just black and it says one per thousand.
Yeah.
One per thousand. But to me, that doesn't make any sense because if this was a business, you'd do one per thousand. If this is a warehouse, let's put it this way. Down a few Amazons of like four million square feet, think how many parking places you'd have to have in our town for that.
A lot.
Yeah, but it doesn't make sense when it's a warehouse is what I'm saying. I don't know, you guys need that many?
No, we're above what we need. We initially had prepared a plan removing half our parking with the intent of going to zoning for a dement or a parking variance.
There is something in here that says you can go talk to the building inspector about that. My suggestion is why don't you go see him on both? Because I mean, I'm looking at this plan and you're storing thirty six cars with one person. If you're lucky, if you get two cars that day, just seems like an awful lot of wasted space and a lot of impervious. But if you wanna get his opinion, you might be able to do something that helps you. If you don't want it, you don't have to.
Yeah, we're we're okay with proposing what we've got.
Okay.
Just to avoid the design relief. But it's a good idea.
Definitely wanna check on the use, the parking.
It's actually a hundred forty four cars, I thought you said. Jack, Jack?
Hmm?
It's actually gonna be a hundred and forty four cars total. You said thirty six cars. It's a hundred forty four because they have
Thirty, okay, thirty six parking places, yeah.
And I think you're correct with it being a warehouse and I think the the semantics is we don't park cars there, we store them there because nobody's driving their car in that warehouse. They're driving it to the warehouse and we store it. Store it, park it, you know, is your car parked if it's up three high? So it's really a warehouse, to your point, that stores cars.
Oh, it's a parts warehouse that stores completely assembled cars?
Exactly. I mean, that's really what, you know, because people aren't driving in and out as they would outside in the parking area.
Do you want me to ask that question? You take vo-vo's? Okay, I don't have any more questions or comments. That's just if you wanna talk to them, it's up to you guys. Definitely make sure he's understood in case someone comes down and says, where's your parking? You're parking and parking. It's more of a warehouse, so.
Yes.
That's my comments. Anybody from the audience have any questions, comments? If you do, come on up. If not, okay. All right, doesn't seem to be. So there's just a little homework, right, Cal?
Not much.
Not much, okay. If you make the changes Phil's asked for, make the locus the right, so it's right and a couple of cows. And if you're gonna talk to the building inspector, you change it, fine. But if not, if you wanna leave it as is?
Katie, no.
You can always come back if you don't wanna do it. I know somebody wants to get going. You got an approved plan and if you get going and you come back and modify it, you can always modify it.
That's great.
Make sure you have the inclusion of vo-vo's.
Yeah, they wanna get going. We do, there were a couple delays.
Electric vo-vo.
Client's beating us up. I can't change this holiday season and out of form and I said, we'll just get as quick as we can.
He'd be the first.
It must be something to be there when you get like six kings coming in for their cars. Each one is a king on their own.
Well, they're all, I don't know, because I don't own any of these fancy cars, so.
They're all kings if they're storing that.
I think so.
Okay. Need an extension? Do we get an extension once on next meeting?
September nineteenth.
Okay, September nineteenth. We're all done, it shouldn't be an issue. Can we have an extension through the end of September?
Okay.
Okay. Make a motion to allow an extension for the applicant up through September thirtieth?
Second.
Twenty four, second. All in favor? Hi. Okay, pose and we don't have much on there, do we?
We do, we have West End at seven ten and Chetan Hotel at seven twenty.
Why don't we put them at seven oh five? Hopefully they shouldn't be, won't make them wait through all that stuff.
Chetan Hotel, it's new. That's for both, special permit, yes.
For the special permit, you've given us extension for both the special permit and the site plan. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So it's seven oh five and six outside, is that?
Seven oh five, seven oh six on the nineteenth. All right, next one?
This is three eighty three Fisher Street. Again, there will revise comments. There's rules right there, yeah. I have to read, I have to get new community, so leave this standing. We've had too many meetings.
Okay. The hour after seven twenty, we have a continued public hearing for three eighty three Fisher Site Plan twenty four oh seven. That being said, uh, if you got you have everybody here tonight, but I wasn't here in that moment, so this means I won't be voting on it one way or another. Okay, well, um. Wasn't here a lot, were there more things to do or? What was the last? Let me ask you, did you have to do an updated plan?
We did, yep.
Did we get in time, Kate? Okay, so we have an updated plan and if you wanna explain some of the changes and then I'll read some of the comments of your updated plan.
Sure. Yeah, so my name's Marlon Locke, I'm representing Lockland Hall. So yeah, there was a bit of homework to do, which we got in before, two weeks prior to this meeting. A couple of the general details were adjusting the scale.
Is this yours?
Yes, correct. You you're probably working off the same list, but adjusting the scale.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I didn't know who it was from. I thought Cal wrote this, but it's just saying, okay.
Adding adding a signature block, confirming the dimensions for fire truck access. We've added lighting layout, so our engineering group had a lighting designer take a review and added in lighting throughout the space. There's actually also a detail of that light on the second page as well, so they're pole mounted. A few of the notes included infill of the pool, removal of some of the dead trees and demolition of some of the structures, mainly sheds out back. Adding some details around the paving, so such as thickness, the berm, curbs, I think the parking bumpers. It was mainly around notes and detail, so we've gone and added a full detail set, so it's a three-page drawing now. So existing conditions, the new construction as well as details. And then I guess probably two of the other primary concerns from the board were that we checked this off with the fire department and board of health. We have reviewed with the fire department, confirming, I think mainly this space, the access, the radius to turn a vehicle around. They had, didn't have any comments, so they approved our layout and we have a, we have a letter in writing. And the second comment was to get in touch with the board of health around trash removal. The board of health confirmed that as long as the zoning is staying the same, which is residential, will be treated as kind of the rest of the neighbors. So we just have to stick to the limit of two hundred and twenty gallons a month, which will be obviously well under. We'll probably be significantly less amounts of trash than any of the surrounding neighbors. So I think that was probably the highlights. Majority was just adding another layer of details into the into the drawings.
Okay. Read some of the comments we've got. This is Y twenty second. The fire department, the plans are acceptable and you recommend adding curb extensions at least two foot beyond each edge of the parking lot that connects to the roadway. You understand that, right? You must have talked to them?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's Cal's from the police, uh, on August eighth. Police department has no public safety concerns related to traffic. The board of health has, they're August thirteenth meeting, they've already announced, they have no comments at this time.
Is that sufficient?
They have their chance, so they don't got any comments. I mean, it's like if they know when it has to be done, John, so speak now, right? They will hold your peace. I do. Okay, Cal, you can read now.
Mr. Chairman, I I agree with the summary presented by the applicant that was based on previous comments. So this plan set is three sheets, the other one was a single sheet. Based upon the last hearing, I got the feeling that the board wanted the site plans formed into something that we're more traditionally used to seeing. So a lot of the comments on this review are about changing the labeling, title block. For instance, the existing conditions plan is showing the removal of trees. You don't normally put proposed conditions on an existing. I recommended some modifications to the title block to be more consistent with some plans that we see, those sort of things. So we have several comments along that, trying to clarify notes on what curb cut permits, street opening permits, all those sort of things that are in the in this memorandum, basically to try and get this thing in form that we usually see a site plan to approve. The only thing that that might require a little bit more looking into is they interpreted my comment on how to do the drainage and whatever way they interpreted it, it's a little close to the garage. I'd like to see the swale carry the water further back from the garage and possibly locate the berm in a different in a different area. And I recommended that get together with me before they do a plan resubmission so we can get squared away on that. But everything else is in pretty good shape.
Elsa? Cal, Elsa?
Yeah.
Okay, Cal?
The decision was made to fill in the pools, am I correct?
That's correct.
Other than that, I don't think I have any other questions.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, no, I'm making the changes that Carl suggested. I know that parking was a was an issue some of the neighbors brought up, but I also know, I believe it's parking is allowed there. So and and so I think, you know, if parking became a problem, it would have to be something handled, you know, through the police or the normal course of things, so. So, yeah, so I'm good with the plan.
Okay, Kate?
My question's more of a curiosity question. It after our last meeting, came up at the end of our last meeting and it's more that I just wondered, I just clarification. So I'm stuck on the fact that it's becoming a church hall, right? That's what you call it?
Correct, yep.
But you're not altering the house. That's what I'm, I'm, so I live across street from a church. So when in my head, when I think church, I think of, you know, a worship, somewhere you worship, it's a big area. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit for me?
Sure, it's probably, I guess, two things. One is, and I I didn't bring the pictures this time, we showed some pictures last time of kind of another one we've done similarly in the town of Canton. I think we wanna maintain as much as we can, yes, we are put in a parking lot, maintain the look and feel of a residential neighborhood. I think what we do inside is our worship. It's not about kind of creating a a big structure, a big steeple. So I think we're, we just wanna maintain the look of a standard residential house. The other thing probably just came down to some of the cost. We found that the garage was actually the largest sort of interior space just because of the layout of the house. It was the most suitable for the use. So we don't actually really have use for the rest of the house other than if we need to, say, store something there. So that was kind of the cost driver. We don't need to renovate the whole house because we're only really going to be using the garage and a small portion for the restrooms.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
I'm ju- I'm just trying to clarify the in and out of the driveway. I'm a cyclist and I cycle in that cycle lane past this house. Concern is that, you know, if somebody doesn't see me coming, you know, out of, I would say more out, you know, they would see us coming down if they were entering the house, but coming out. I'm having trouble understanding the clearance, like, you know, is because right now, I mean, it's it's a rundown house, you know, there's nobody coming out and stuff like this. But I mean, again, I know your hours of seven to nine, you know, on a Sunday, I think you said, right, seven AM to nine AM?
Yeah, or actually potentially a little earlier, yeah.
But I, but that's prime time cycling for most. And my concern would be, you know, Sunday worship, people leave, somebody doesn't see it because you have to cross over that cycle lane.
Correct.
So what type of signage that you have or any, I don't know, Cal, is there any needed? Because again, they have to go over that cycle lane if, you know what I'm saying, like?
We did the cycle lane on the complete streets and I believe there's some, actually, I don't think there's much signage up there at all. There was some discussion about how to handle the striping for the cycle lane at the cross streets and whatnot. But I mean, I don't know how many driveways there are up there.
Well, but I mean, a driveway that may pack one or two cars versus their worship hall. You know, I mean, there's more than two cars leaving this driveway, maybe all at the same time. So.
Joe Wilson with Lockland Hall helping Marlon on some of the details on this. We do have a note on the submitted, says existing trees along the lot frontage that can be saved are to have branches removed within twelve feet of ground level. Any shrubs and other vegetation along the frontage are to be trimmed above to improve site distances. So the intent being to basically make so twelve feet and below would be completely clear except for the trunk would be.
I'm 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 only advocating for the psych, you know, for the person that leaving, you don't see the cyclists coming down. I mean, you know, I've seen too many accidents and the car, the car already, car always and the car always wins, unfortunately, in those, you know? So...
Very valid concern. I think in addition to that, there is an actual sign. It's exit only, so it is one-way. And we could certainly, I think some of it's kind of about rules and regs as well, stopping when you get up to the line. Also, our vegetation buffer is just kind of to shield the parking lot. So, again, to maintain the look and feel. But it does stop. And although we will try and leave some of the trees to get the necessary radiuses and for your sight line as well, we probably will have to remove a few of those trees.
As I said, I'm just having trouble visually seeing what it would look like. I know what it looks like now, and I'm sure you'll clean it up, and it'll look great, but, you know, it's just that person that just does not see it, you know? But anyways, that's...
I did notice, though, you do have a proposed stop sign at the exit.
Correct.
I mean, obviously, people don't know, but that's at least one good step.
Mr. Chairman, addressing Member Smith's concerns, they do propose some landscaping behind the right-of-way line as a screen to the parking lot. You're correct, the more visibility there is up there, the better it is for the cyclist and the vehicles. Two options, either delete that screening, because it's going to screen the visibility of what's coming in and out of the driveway to a certain degree, and vice versa, or move it a little closer to the parking lot. There's not a lot of room there. There's a couple of trees in the right-of-way that exist. One of them's a 20-inch pine, according to the plans. That's going to be a little more difficult to remove and whatnot. But, you know, you could consider that if that's really a... There's nothing, I don't know that we have to have that screening there. I don't know if you want it, if you thought we wanted it, or whatever it is. But to me, it's up for discussion.
The better the visual, you know?
I think, we don't have to have it. I think it was probably more so for the benefit of the neighbors, especially across the street.
So, I'm open to suggestion, and that's up to the board.
That's the 20-inch tree you're talking about?
Now, the 20-inch tree is a different animal. That's a public shade tree, so that would require a hearing to remove, presumably. But I'm talking about the landscaping they're proposing on their property.
To push it back.
But it's still potentially, yeah, to push it back or eliminate it.
Eliminating.
That would work. Well, you got to tell them what you think. Either out or move it back.
Well, if you move it back, would it... And you... So, you put the stop sign at the end of the driveway, and you move the screen back, how much, you know, how much of a visit... I mean, how much would the car be at the end of the driveway to where you could possibly pull it back?
Well, you got the big tree there anyway, that the town's tree, right at the, when you're coming out, right? Isn't that the town tree right at the corner? So, that's the biggest, yeah, that's the biggest hamper there. The other ones ain't going to make a difference.
I mean, it's just, you know, as long as half the car, call it, right? Because as long as the driver is past the screen, right? The driver has to be the person that has to visually see the cyclist. That's all. I mean, it's not like you have to... So, I would, I mean, I respect what they're trying to do to shade it. I want to think of the residents that live on Fisher Street, Kyle. So, I don't want to just make it about the cyclist. But if they pushed it back, I would be happy with that, as long as the most of the car or at least the driver could technically see that cycle lane before they left.
But you're only going to push those four trees or bushes, whatever they are, right?
Yeah, and you can't get them too far. There's not a lot of room there. You could push them back some.
Oh, it's behind the stone wall, too, where they proposed, yeah.
Yeah.
You'd better just take it out if it's that easy. Try to be sympathetic for Fisher Street residents as well.
I mean, one other thing we could propose, I know that the new... So, the exit is here. Most of our new vegetation is over actually more north towards the entrance. We're not... I mean, if we have to take down another tree or two just to give it another 10 feet of clearance, I don't think that's the end of the world either. Where some of that stuff's kind of nasty and drops branches and whatever else might be in the best interest, anyway, just to remove another one of those trees.
My recommendation would be to thin it out as best you can and push it back as far as you can. Okay? That would be my recommendation. Thin it, push it, and I think that would be a...
Just make that note on the plan, please.
Sure.
I'm not going to tell you exactly where to push. You're going to wait till you see where you are. Game day, Carl, right?
Idea would be to try and get enough room so you have kind of your car could edge out with the whole front door and window.
Exactly. The car goes to the end of the driveway, right, stops. It has to look both ways anyways. And as long as the driver doesn't have a tree or bushes, you know... Because, again, it's just that split second, you know? Because a cyclist will assume that the car is going to stop just in case, seen it too many times. I'm good, Jack.
All right. You got a note on here on the pool, if required by the town. I think you're going to scratch that note.
So, we had discussed last week. It was kind of a secondary item. We are planning to fill it in.
Yeah.
It is fenced off, so it's actually safe and inaccessible right now. We are planning to fill it in in the later days. We had added that note.
Yeah, but it says if required. You say you're going to do it, just...
In my comments, I asked them to take that if required off. It should be a requirement of this approval.
It's another one a little ticky-tacky, but you might want to put existing pool to be removed and infilled. Because if you, the way it's read here, if I'm a contractor, I'm not even touching your pool. I just come in and dump dirt. You know, a guy did that. Didn't work out well, because he didn't put holes in the bottom. So, it's just something to clear up the note, because I know you're going to put this out the bid, naturally, right?
Yep.
So, just so the guy isn't dumping it, and you end up with, what do you call it? Mush. My question to you is, why are you guys here?
In general, sorry, is it about the church or about us?
No, not you, the church. Why are you here for site plan? Who made you come? Or did they make you come, but you're doing it on your own?
No, of free choice, I guess. I represent, I'm one of the board members. John in attendance is also one of the board members. There's two congregation members as well. I think it's in our best interest, actually, Joe, myself, and Courtney in the audience, we're all actually from Walpole, so this would be our, what we call, a local room.
All right, so you did this on your own?
We did this on our own, yeah.
Okay, because the only reason I ask, because I think you know, is you're exempt from any of this stuff, right?
We're, yeah, we obviously want to be respectful and follow all the rules.
It's fine. It's like, you come here and you, you know, get along with the neighbors. I'm 100% in support. I was wondering why? Because we happen to have a new regime in our town for schools. We don't do site plans anymore, like when I did it on my building committee, because you want the neighbors to have a say. And that also gives, you know, a nice olive branch, whatever you want to call it. But you guys did it on your own. I was just curious. So, all right, that's, you did what's just fine. Didn't have to, but you did. But I know why you did. It's the way you want to do it. It's probably the way I would have done it, anyway. Okay. Anybody else in the audience, questions or comments in the public regarding this? If not, okay. Just a little bit of homework, right? Just to clean up your plans, and... Need an extension?
No.
No? Good to the end of September? All right. If you get the plan, you know, the two weeks, or if you're getting ahead of it. So, the 19th, you have to have them in by at least the 5th of September, so within the next...
Do they have to go back out, John?
What?
Do those plans have to go back out?
No, they're going to make a little changes here, right? After a few things, Kyle has a few things on there. Same thing we're going to put on the note for Paul.
What time do you want to put them on? Before Carver?
Yeah.
Like 7:01? I mean, just so they could be first, because it's...
We're running out of minutes, we'll be done the second soon, yeah. All right, so if you put all that cleanup, get it to us, and we'll see you on the 19th of September at 7:01? Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question, will there be a vote at that time?
Yeah, it should be, unless something falls out of the sky or something happens. I mean, unless you guys change your plans radically, so... And you didn't need Concom on this, right? You had no conservation issues? I don't see... That's usually what happens, is they move a line or they do something, so you should be all set. Thank you. Were you getting the full Monty tonight? Getting the full Monty setting up and all that? I liked it better when Joe controlled you. Yes. Want to contribute to the grandchild fund? I just got three in the last couple of months, so...
You got three now?
No, I got six.
Six?
Yeah. I don't have your money, Rob.
There's a woman out there who owns a couple places and a restaurant and everything else.
Before we start, can I say, these are doc and fantastic.
Do you know how many times I have to print those?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I found out why you won't do it. I have to, once I make the PDF and I send it to the copier, they come out, you can't read them. So, I have to print them from AutoCAD to that small copier.
Well, they're great, thank you.
Oh, trust me, I knew. I printed them, and I couldn't read them. I'm like, oh, God, I can't send these down there.
All right, and, I believe this was open last time, right? So, I ain't mulling, so, there you go. I'm not mulling it, I'm not voting. Thank you. If I knew it was you, Rob, I would have, so I could...
I'm surprised you didn't mull it, though, knowing you...
I don't believe in mulling. You're either here or you're not. It's a stupid, lazy rule. It allows people just to stay home and watch it on TV or have a few beers doing it. But, anyway. Okay, I'll open the, continued public hearing for Hash Brown Site Plan 2408 and Special Permit 2409, with that being said. Update what's changed since last time, Rob, please?
So, since the last time, you know, we made some revisions per Town Engineers' comments. Had some back and forths with the fire department. We did do some work on the site for them as well. They posted, put a hydrant on the site behind the existing building, get it within 100 feet of the new building, so he can do his hookup. Other than that, you know, we've been through conservation, as we said before. There really isn't a lot of changes in the sense of the layout, the look of the site, the building. It's all the same. As you know, the building's going to be identical in size, and we're going to have contractor base very similar to exist, the building we already built, which is, you know, not 100% complete on the outside with landscaping and the striping. The only difference in the two buildings is the back of that building will technically be the front of this building, because this building's backside faces the woods. That one had two sides, if you recall. We put the garage doors on the back, had the facade facing the street with entry doors and windows. This building's not facing the street, it's actually behind the other building. So, the front of this building looks like it's the back of that building. But that's, I mean, I did see the comments today that came out from the Town Engineer. You can go through them. I do believe you have a new letter from the Fire Department. I did get a copy of that. I did give you, I mean, I gave you a list of materials that could potentially be on-site. I think we went over that the last time with the other building. It's not saying that all these materials are on-site, but I think what we talked about before, because the last one was just list everything that could potentially be there, so you don't have a problem later on with some of the comments that came up. So, these aren't all the products that are on the site. These are things that may potentially be there. Ideally, what's going to happen in the new building is any tenant that goes in there, these will all be rentals. Some of them will be rented to the people that are on-site now. They're going to move into the building versus being outdoors. Some of them are outdoors right now. And anything they do, whether it's hazardous waste or whatever they want to put in the building, they're going to have to go through the permitting process with the proper boards, whether it's Board of Health, Fire Department, Building Department, et cetera. So, whatever they store or have to do on their, on that tenant, I mean, he doesn't know exactly what tenants will go in there. They would be required to do that. I think you put that in your last decision as a condition that they would have to obtain all permits from Board of Health, Fire, et cetera, for anything that goes in the building. That's pretty much it. I don't really have much more to offer on the site. The changes, like I said, were pretty minor in nature. They didn't really change the site layout or anything.
All right, all these comments, we got from Board of Health at the August 13th meeting. They voted unanimously, they have no comments at this time.
That's different.
Do you want the mosquitoes? It says the mosquitoes in North Far County. They know, it's up to them to respond, whatever way. Fire Department dated the 22nd. Is this incorporated, or is this after your plan?
After the new plan.
All right. He wants a fire hydrant within 100 feet?
That must be the old letter.
You said it was, and now it is?
There's a new letter. He forwarded to me the other day that went, it was addressed to the board from a couple of weeks. What's the date of that?
July 22nd?
There was only two comments in his letter. How many in there?
Three.
There was the first one that said he was, he basically said he was comfortable with the site.
Is there a second letter behind him?
No. That's all I got.
I don't have mine with me. Who are you?
Do you have yours with you?
I don't think I do.
It wasn't in the package, was it?
He sent, we got an email.
Yeah. I know he sent something, I'm not sure which one he sent that I got.
Hang on, I might have it.
He's got two comments.
That was it, right?
Yeah, there is a new one.
So, this one is...
It's one here.
What's the date?
July 22nd.
July 22nd.
There's a new one.
August 8th. He sent an email.
Okay, number, we'll work with the application directly, applicant, directly on the, please, on the hydrant roadway surface.
I'll read it. We will work with the applicant directly on hydrant and roadway surface markings. We find these plans acceptable for our operation and provide no further comments at this time.
Thank you.
And that was for both the site plan and the special.
And, this is Carl's.
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Truax indicated, I gave a letter today dated August 15th, recapping my previous letter. The first part of that was, in that letter, I noted some outstanding items from the prior building, 272 South Street. Mr. Truax took care of whatever related things that he could do on the plan, the rest of them are on the ground. They're raising a water curb stop. Pavement repair in South Street, striping parking spaces and HP stalls, currently the parking lot's in binder and it's not striped, and installed a building number on, um, building number 272. Um, then I go on to indicate, I recap the few things that are left over from the review. Lighting plan has not been provided yet. And then I have some comments about how the water and fire service, uh, as Mr. Truax indicated, he added a hydrant to it, there's a fire service there. Our group, DPW, wants the water, domestic water service completely separate. Um, so you have to put a meter pit in and run that back separately to the building and then run the fire service to the, um, hydrant and then out back to the building. We can go over that if you want, Rob.
That's fine. So just so I'm clear, that would be, we'd bring the six inch in for the hydrant and bring the four inch off of that?
Yes.
And then bring a separate domestic all the way back?
Correct.
Okay.
And that, because that's over a hundred feet, it'll have to have a meter pit.
Yep.
And really, um, the rest of the items are, are, um, basically, I won't say typographic, but plan edits. Um, got a few, still one table on the stormwater report and a couple of things in there that I think need to be edited, Rob, I think we should go over that too. I mean, have a few minutes meeting and you can see what I'm talking about.
I looked at it, yeah.
I put in approval items and asked for some conditions in the special permit, in the Aqua for special permit. A sheet will likely need to be added for the decision and possibly the light, and also possibly lighting plan added. And then I make a suggestion that, um, that I did on the prior Aqua for permits about providing a floor plan showing where the hazardous storage will be and that it also be, um, provided in a, um, flammable, uh, a flammable cabinet with containment some size sufficiently for the, uh, materials to be stored. That's gonna be on all the Aqua for permits from now on. And then I have asked at the end, Mr. Chairman, that they, um, there's been some grading and, and whatnot landscaping along the frontage of the lot, I've asked that they complete the side, uh, put a sidewalk in in the right of way out there. It's almost all ready to go for it now, but I've asked that that be included in the decision as well. And that would be just in front of the frontage of, 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 uh, Mr. Brown's lot.
Is that on his land?
No, it will be in the right of way.
We were here.
So it would be technically offsite.
Go ahead, let him finish. You all set?
Yep, yes.
Let's talk the sidewalk, we can't make them, he can agree to do it, but you have to go see the slack men and all that.
So, Mr. Brown, okay, just to rehab, a couple things, um, as far as the lighting plan, we would ask that you would condition that because he just hasn't gone to the lighting company and ordered the buildings yet, so he's holding off till he got site plan approval to go get the building ordered and then he'd get the electrical people involved, he'll get, bring you, and he'll give you a lighting plan at that point in time prior to, prior to a building permit application, if that would be acceptable to the board. As far as the sidewalk goes, Mr. Brown's not here, but he has reiterated to me that he's been working with DPW on the site, he cut down all the trees along the right of way for them, he's prepping the area with gravel, and then he would leave it like that for them to put the sidewalk in, he was not agreeable to actually building the sidewalk. But he was working with DPW in good faith that they were gonna build the sidewalk and he was gonna help him prep it, which he did. So he's taken all those big trees, if you've been down there, there was a couple of big trees right on the turn that were sight distance, actually right on the edge of the road. So those are all gone. He worked with DPW and took those out of the right of way, left the ones that they asked him to leave and he's prepping the area with a gravel base for them, so they could come in and do that sidewalk, but he was not agreeable to actually building the sidewalk. He was under the impression that DPW was gonna put the sidewalk in. So we're kinda, he's kinda surprised by this comment.
Uh, I'm gonna bite my tongue, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Alright, uh, so those are two issues out there, now, the other stuff has to be put in the plan, right, Carl? A little homework?
Yeah, either on the plan or in the conditions of approval.
And what, what, just so I get them, what, oh, you got, you talked about the fire service, that's not shown yet, right?
No, that is shown.
What, I thought you just talked about?
No, the hydrant's shown on the site, so we came in with a six inch line.
Yep.
And then we came off that six inch for our domestic and our fire service to the building. So what Carl is saying is, that's fine as far as the fire service and the sprinkler service, he just wants the, the domestic service to be separated from that and come all the way from the street and be a meter pit at the road. I have a six inch line coming in about, I can actually show you, comes in behind the existing building to a hydrant for the fire, that was for the Fire Department, so we did that, it's on the plan. But then we came off of that six inch with our two taps, one for the sprinkler system and one for the domestic service. So the only thing we're gonna change is take that domestic service off and put it out in the street. The other will stay. I mean, ideally, we'd like to get an approval with conditions, that would be ideal for us, so we can order the building. I mean, that's really what he's waiting on.
We went through that.
But, I understand.
We, you know.
I get it.
I heard that last time, too.
No, I, I get it.
You know, I, once, the second time, I get a little annoyed, we can't hold, you know, we were holding up the building last time.
No, we just wanna order it.
I understand, that was the same.
No, no, I know.
Boy used last time. I'm not that forgive, I don't forget, I'm not that forgiving.
I don't see anything on here that's earth shattering, I mean, he, you know, the gravel base for the pavement's new, we can put that spec on there. I believe it's in the roadway spec for the town subdivision rules, that's where that comes from. And I think it just came up 'cause someone just gave him a Civ analysis that didn't pass.
Alright, well.
Kinda triggered that on me, I'm sure.
It did.
It did, I know it did.
Okay, I'll go down the list, Paul, what do you think? Condition, add this stuff to another plan for next time.
The conditions would require a revised plan. We give you a revised plan with the, with these things on it, that would be your condition.
I'm either saying a condition now, or submit a revised plan showing this stuff.
Oh, I see, continue the hearing.
Yes. Carl kinda said it would be good, right?
He said he's gonna bite his tongue.
Yeah, well, that was about the sidewalk.
Yeah.
The rest of it, I mean, this, the, you know, the, the issues with the existing building are not, they aren't resolved. We said, okay, you know, you don't have parking spite, you don't have handicap parking out there and it's a water gate that's not raised to grade, you know, it's been a while since this all went on, I don't want, you know, that stuff could've been done. Alright, so I don't know how we're gonna condition that, it's already part of a prior approval that wasn't done.
So Jack, new plans.
Like a mill? Okay, you'd like a mill? Phil?
Yeah, I think considering that there are some other things that haven't been done for the first building, I'm, I'm gonna agree with that.
John?
Yeah.
So how do we resolve the things that aren't done, they're not gonna get done between now and the next meeting?
What, what is it gonna get done?
He hasn't done the finished pavement yet, he hasn't striped it.
He can stripe the binder.
He could, but he was waiting to do it all at once. I mean, this permit's separate of that, those are items that are outstanding and that permit hasn't been, well, we haven't asked for final on that yet, we haven't given an ASBIL.
Yeah, I understand, and we had, we did it with the mall and everybody else, they haven't, they didn't conform to what they're supposed to do, so. You know.
It's just not done yet.
What do we need for, striping?
Yeah, striping. They're pretty easy items, raising the water gate, that wouldn't take long. Putting a building number on, that doesn't take long, the most complicated part of the outstanding items would be to do the striping. I agree, there's an expense of that, he'd have to do it again on the finish coat, but god knows when he's gonna do the finish coat.
I mean, this building's been kicking around, what, a year and a half now?
No, it hasn't been, it has been.
Oh, all of that.
There you go, you're right, you're right.
We haven't painted it yet. Just, unless you're gonna give him a sidewalk, then I'd agree to just give all the conditions.
We'd rather paint it. Right.
Alright, so you clean that up, do what you have to do for the other stuff and...
Okay.
You be ready for next time?
Yep. What's your next hearing?
Extension.
We need a extension? Extension first?
Yeah. Yeah, I only extended it to the end of this month.
End of this month?
Yeah, we'll give you a new one till the end of September.
You're only gonna go the end of August now?
No, I gave you one to the end of August, I'll give you a new one.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were doing it like that other guy does all the time.
No.
What are you having, 10:09, 30?
We'd be here tonight for that hearing.
You're gonna give it to when? End of September?
End of September.
Okay, make a motion to allow the applicant till the end of September?
Second.
The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Septe- 19th? Put him after the...
702 after Fisher Street?
No, keep going.
703?
Keep going.
704?
Keep going.
705 and 6 is Carpon, 710 is West End, 720 is Juton Hotel.
Probably before 710.
Seven what?
I don't know.
702.
No, I'm not going in first, because we, no, 709. Right before the other guy.
Okay, well, 5 and 6 are Carpon.
Yeah, that's fine.
So you want him after Carpon?
Yeah, and before West End, if he's not cooperative, he goes after West End.
Thank god he likes it, Rob.
I, I know, right? He's known me way too long.
That's the problem.
And this is for both special permit, site plan, correct, Rob?
Both.
Yep.
Okay, continue to 919.
Please.
He's known me way too long.
Would you give us, make it easy, give us a letter of what you want for that special conditions?
708, 709.
708, 709, that you, the future tenants will have to seek their own.
Okay.
As long as you present it to us, and we can put it in.
We'll put it in the letter, do you want a comment? Yep, that's fine.
Alright, see you then.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, no, on the original submission.
Oh, be careful biking on that street.
Careful what?
That bike lane on Fisher Street, be careful up there.
Hey, that's it.
I'm surprised you haven't asked me to ride down North Street on my bike. Can't see, I know, I know Lou would like that. He'd like coming after me down there.
Rob, you know, 25 miles an hour on the 10 speed, you know, there's not a lot of stopping radius, you know?
Well, Paul, I have a history of bicycles, so, I'm not a good one.
Well, and that's the only, that's the only thing I was advocating for, that's all, just more like, hey.
Is that as good as your hockey career?
I've taken out a couple bicycles in my career.
And you've taken a lot, a couple teeth?
I've taken down a couple bikes in my career, unfortunately, wasn't great. Wasn't that long? Just so you know.
Okay.
Good night, everyone, thanks.
See you, Rob.
Alright, we have now a discussion on Sycamore parcels?
Yep. That's for Jack. Jack, there was a preliminary done back on September 26th, 2019. It's voted 310 to grant tenant approval.
I don't remember that.
You don't?
I don't know if it'd be in here, but.
Yeah.
Be one?
Good evening.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name's Luke Legere, I'm an attorney with McGregor, Legere and Stevens. I represent the owners of the two Sycamore Street parcels we're here to discuss this evening, Deborah and Leon LaFrembois. LaFrembois is here with us this evening, as is Rob Gemma from Metro West Engineering. Rob prepared the conceptual or informal plan that we have presented for the board this evening, and we've got it blown up for you here as well. Just really briefly, I'll give you a quick overview of sort of some of the history here, and then Rob, maybe jump in on some of the more specific details of what we've put together for this conceptual design. The two parcels that form the one larger parcel that we're proposing, uh, here are shown as lots 241 and 242 on map 17 of the assessor's maps. Those two parcels were created back in 1902 by virtue of a plan that was filed with the Registry of Deeds at about that time, so well over a century ago. That plan does show Sycamore Street, uh, which is an undeveloped, unbuilt paper road, essentially. The two parcels, 241 and 242, are the only remaining undeveloped lots shown along Sycamore Street on that plan, and we did give you a copy of that 1902 plan as Exhibit B to our letter. So as you can see, those two parcels both satisfy the current area requirements under zoning, they're both over 20,000 square feet. Neither of them, though, individually would satisfy frontage requirements of 125 feet. One's about 100 feet on Sycamore and the other's, I think, 120 feet on Sycamore. What we are proposing here is to consolidate those two lots into one larger parcel, which would easily satisfy both area and frontage requirements, something on the scale of 45,000 square feet of area and over 200 feet of frontage along Sycamore Street. The reason we're here before you this evening is we did go have a conversation with the building commissioner, requested an opinion from him, and the bottom line is because Sycamore Street was never actually built, it was the building commissioner's opinion that we needed to come before the board essentially to get your approval or sign off on the construction of a Sycamore Street rain, uh, Sycamore Street right of way or access road to the lot that we are proposing there, that one single family residence. It's probably worth just noting for the board, just so you're aware, the Sycamore, Sycamore Street right of way itself appears on that 1902 plan, it appears on several other plans, all recorded in the Registry of Deeds, it appears on the assessor's map, on the town zoning map. At least one of the parcels on the assessor's records is taxed as Sycamore Street. The deed to the property to the Mr. and Mrs. LaFrembois also recognizes and specifically calls out that the lots are along Sycamore Street and actually calls out one of them as having an address on Sycamore Street. So, uh, this really is a situation where we just have this historic paper road, which was never constructed. It is the sole means of access to these parcels of land. It isn't needed for access to any other parcels. So if you look at that 1902 plan, uh, there was a, another road, Joel Avenue, built, which is not shown on that 1902 plan. So all of the parcels to the south, I guess, of Sycamore Street, as shown on, shown on that plan, are built parcels with frontage on Joel. And as you get past the two properties that we're talking about here this evening, those have all been consolidated and are developed now with frontage along Glen Road. So, uh, what we're talking about here is essentially a glorified driveway. It's really just an access road to provide access back to these two parcels, so that they can be constructed. We've laid out for you in our letter why legally there is a right for our clients to use that right of way as access to their property. Certainly happy to answer any questions you might have around that particular issue. But, I think maybe before I start getting into that, I'm gonna turn it over to Rob to just quickly walk you through some of the more specific details of the plan.
I looked at developing essentially a private road, which, as Luke said, would be essentially a, a single family driveway. Bring that up, uh, constructed to a point that would satisfy minimum safety standards for fire, emergency equipment access, a T-turnaround, so emergency equipment could maneuver and get out, bring in public utilities such as sewer, water, underground electric telephone and that sort of thing. And, and at this point, you know, this is, I think as we said, it's a conceptual type plan. If we kinda got some traction from the board tonight, that I, I talked to the, uh, the public safety agencies, fire, police in particular, and make sure that we're meeting their needs for public safety in terms of how to get in and out of there. So what I'm showing at this level is a 25, or is a 20-foot wide page section, uh, coming back, so we have 20 feet for the Fire Department. We would have, um, a six inch sewer line to the back with a, with manholes as appropriate, you know, 250 foot obstacles. Water service to the house. We would handle the drainage system on this way with some subsurface infiltration galleries and a couple of catch basins before we get back to High Street. And then the two lots themselves would be combined and, uh, as Luke said, one parcel, it'd be one single family home there and that would be the extent of, uh, the Sycamore area development. So, that's our thought, anyway.
So we're here this evening really, um, just as an initial step, we're hoping, as Rob said, to just get some input, some guidance from the board before going further with more formal plans and further expenditure of our clients' resources. We just wanted to come meet with the board. As I mentioned, uh, in our view, it's clear our clients have a right to access their properties over Sycamore. We also appreciate, uh, that this board has a duty and obligation to make sure that that access is going to be adequate for public health, safety and welfare purposes, and certainly has the right to put reasonable conditions on that. So, that's the idea here tonight, is to just try to get some feedback from the board before we go further. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Alright, John, you wanna go first?
Well, obviously, the road was never built.
Obviously the road was never built, made the street only. After the 20-something years, whatever, the rights for the road reverted back to the neighboring properties. So you're going to have to get in contact with everyone on the southeast side there because they own interest into that road.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm not familiar with the 20, what, you say after 20 years? I can address the issue more generally, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yes. 21, 27, I can't remember what's the exact number now.
The one you're referring to is like 1972, 73, where the state came out and says, you own to the center, he owns the center. They got rid of all the private, non-built roads.
I think that that's the case, that they own to the center, but also I think the way that the case law has proceeded is that anyone who abuts the way and does have ownership rights to the center line has the right to pass and repass and make whatever improvements they need to make those movements. So anyone who owns property along Sycamore Way would have the right to improve it to the extent that they need to use the way.
Yeah, that, well said, Rob. The derelict fee statute is what was being referred to there. That is really what codifies the principle that property owners along a private way or a paper road essentially own to the center point. So that's certainly true. But Rob hit the nail on the head. That does not override or supersede another legal principle of easement by estoppel, which I've laid out in my letter. And essentially, our clients have an easement in Sycamore Street, providing them the right to access their lots along that road. We've cited a few cases in our letter from the State Supreme Judicial Court. This is a really well-established legal principle going way, way back, many, many decades.
And that said too, if the, if this way was constructed somewhat along the ways I've laid it out, once it's built, you know, not that they need it, but if anyone who has a center line and ownership interest to the center of the way wanted to use that way for something like accessing shed on the rear of their property or anything, they have the right to do so because once the way is there, they also have rights to pass and repass over it.
And it may be useful as well from a public health and safety perspective, if there were a fire on one of those abutting parcels, it would give the fire department another means of access. I think particularly the house on the corner there with High Street. It seems there could be some benefit to having the fire department be able to get in behind there.
John, can I interrupt you for a minute? Do you mind?
Yeah.
So how about, if that's true, how about maintenance? So long-term maintenance, if they own, you know, can these people build their home and then be looking to all of those abutters to help maintain the road because they own to the middle?
There would, I mean certainly our proposal here is to have this be a private way. So I certainly take your point. One of the reasons we're here is to discuss exactly that sort of thing. If there were some sort of a condition that the board wanted to place to obligate the owner of these particular parcels to be responsible for maintenance repair, I don't think that would be any issue whatsoever.
Also be placed in the form of a deed restriction on those lots.
So if it's a private road, I know I'm spinning here, but if it's a private road, they own it? They don't own it?
No, actually what Mr. O'Leary said earlier was, was correct. In terms of ownership of the dirt under the road, it really, the derelict fee statute would apply. It would come to the center line.
Right.
But there's the ownership issue and then there's the easement access issue.
So the difference is, you know, liability. So if, for example, there's a community I'm familiar with where they do own to the center and they have to maintain their own roads. So they have a homeowners association and they pay each year roads fees. And as potholes or things like that arise, they fill them in. So, well, in that situation, it's a private road, but the town plows it, which is sort of weird, but. So in this case, the town wouldn't plow it. So who's to say the liability, God forbid there's some sort of an incident should occur and someone's injured. Those people who have been living there with no road there and really had little to no liability exposure because a road didn't exist, now something occurs because a road exists and they all get sued. Which, it's like you're creating a liability exposure for those homes that, right now, it's just a dirt, right? It's brush, it's dirt.
It's trees.
It's unde, yeah, it's undeveloped.
I just feel, and I am in no way legal, so I'm just looking at the liability issue. And I'm also wondering, you know, if they're going to have that exposure, shouldn't everybody be buying into this? Like, I don't know. It just seems strange to me that one person's going to construct it and sort of consider it their own. Everyone else has rights to it, but you're also creating a liability exposure for those people who didn't ask for that liability exposure.
Well, those individuals in purchasing their lots, all purchased properties where the deed specifically references being bounded by Sycamore Street.
Right.
So it, they've, it comes with the property. They all purchased their land subject to that boundary and with notice thereby that this is a right of way that is in existence and that conceivably this could happen at some point to develop those two undeveloped parcels.
Just as a, kind of another hypothetical to go with that, Kate. Like, anyone who owns it to the center line of that road right now, if, if they wanted to for whatever reason, like say they considered this a woodlot, they could still clear it and build a driveway or pavement and use it. You know, they might not get a building permit if they haven't gone through the planning process, but they could still build that way without anyone else's permission. Because everyone who abuts that to the center line can improve that road at any time they want to.
Right, but Rob, I think what she's saying is this, right? Once you become, it becomes a road, okay? And just say any pedestrian walks up that road and something happens to that pedestrian. It's a private way. Now, this parcel of land you're saying would be solely kind of like their own private driveway, but you're saying that everybody who abuts this, okay, to the center line, who's responsible for that person who got hurt?
Well, all I'm saying, Paul, is that even without building the house, you could still have that same situation if someone chose to, to cut in a gravel road. Then, you know, someone wanders down that gravel road and falls in a hole and breaks their ankle. The same liability is still there. The only difference is there's a house here under our proposal.
So I guess I'm, the question's not being answered though, like who?
No, it is. It's, I have my own answer.
Who? I would like to know, like I guess maybe I haven't heard.
Everybody can get sued.
Everybody can get sued, alright.
You own to the middle. You can't deny that liability. You can't.
Yeah.
Sign it away just because you didn't buy into building the road.
Alright.
They could if they all sold.
If they, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
I think it's just important to keep in mind, exactly as Rob said, today, someone could be walking out along there, break their ankle, same thing. It doesn't change that really in any respect. It's just, we have a paved road over it now.
John, did you have any more?
Does the, how far is, it shows in the old plan going from North Street, or High Street rather, to exposing its Pemberton.
It is.
How far, did they come in from the other direction?
They didn't.
They didn't bring in anything from here?
No.
Okay. So these other lots were developed off of something else then?
So the question was, was it developed from the Pemberton Street end? The other, was Sycamore ever constructed? Not as far as I know.
No, I don't think it was.
And if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the lots, I think the last several lots, as shown on that 1902 plan down at that end of Sycamore, have been consolidated into a single parcel now? Yeah, that's, so that is correct. And, and I think they just used the frontage off Pemberton, so.
They did.
Yeah, so there's, oops, that goes back to my point earlier. There's really, you know, there's no need to service any other properties past these two.
And I feel all of the owners to the southeast, southeast side of Sycamore should be involved with this project as owners in the East Street.
Mr. Chairman? John, I don't want to cut you off.
Go ahead, sir.
One thing, when we've done private ways, and this is long in place before I got here, we do a private way covenant, which is a good document, which actually covers maintenance as well. When there's more than one, we do a mutual maintenance agreement. I'm sure that in the private way covenant, it could be spelled out. This is all regarding addressing maintenance of that thing. It's certainly of the proposed driveway. So we could do something, we, I would, if this goes through board approval here, I would certainly recommend that the private way covenant be developed and executed as part of the approval. And that would make it clear that it is to stay private and B, there can be conditions in there clearly saying that the maintenance is on this property here and not on anybody else abutting it or any of that other stuff. And you could even covenant instead, if anybody else wants to get driveways or whatever or somehow otherwise use that, that they also need to join in. And, and the other document would be a mutual maintenance agreement. We could spell that out and said, if somebody wants access in that thing, then they got to do a mutual maintenance agreement, if it goes through approval here.
Yeah, but also just thinking about the issue that John and Kate were talking about too. I might be speaking outside the box here, so you know, you can tell me to shut up if you want to. But we could, you know, somehow it could be conditioned or required that they have to have an umbrella liability policy for any accidents in the way or whatever, just like most homeowners now are getting umbrella policies, just because we live in such a litigious world.
Yeah, I think that's, I think there are probably several different ways we could come at that to address the liability concern certainly. And I think that's a great idea for the maintenance piece of it.
Phil?
Yeah, so, so none of the other owners of the right of way then, can, they don't have a say in whether the right, the, the street is paved? Is that what we're, there were, say, say some of the other owners who own to the midway didn't want to see this go in, you know, to see it paved?
So are you saying that they?
Can they, I'm just asking, can they, can they say we don't want to see it paved? Or that's, that's really beyond their?
And just so I'm clear, are you asking specifically just about paving or develop, you know?
I'm more, I'm developing the right of way, not, not the, I, you know, not what they're doing at the, what you're doing at the end, more just the.
Improving it in some way.
Improving the right of way.
Yeah, so that goes back to the legal principle I mentioned earlier of easement by estoppel. And that's the reason why I mentioned all of those parcels, and we did take a look at the Registry of Deeds, all of the other parcels that would be abutting essentially this proposed drive, all took their property under deeds which specifically bound their land by Sycamore Street and/or specifically refer back to a subdivision plan showing Sycamore Street as bounding their property. And that's really important because that just really nails cold the idea that that legal principle of easement by estoppel applies. And what that says is those property owners taking title to their property under those circumstances are stopped, which is a fancy legal term for meaning they can't do it, are stopped from claiming that our clients don't have that right or don't have that easement. So it's, there is a legal principle that essentially says, you know, they could come to the, certainly they could come to the board hearing and say, we don't like this, but they don't have a legal right to stand in the way. Our clients have that legal right to use this as access.
And is there, is there any probability that the road would be continued further towards Pemberton Street?
There's nothing else developed beyond it, so.
It's just one big parcel past our client's two lots? It's just one big parcel of land that already has, it's, it is developed, correct?
And it's an older home on Pemberton Street.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, there's, there's nothing else to access.
If someone wanted to build a house on that parcel, they, they could do it.
Does Simone's, does Simone's, Carl?
Simone's.
They had, there is a house there already, so.
And do we, so we would need to do an A and R, Jack, on combining the two, the two parcels?
Not necessarily, because it's two lots adjacent can be considered one in terms of building a house.
With the same owner?
With the same owner, yeah.
Alright, how's that? Kate, anything else?
Yeah, so I have no problem with the concept. I really don't. I'm hung up on the liability and I understand that those people purchased those homes, but as you said, the deed goes back so far and no one's ever touched it. So I think it was assumed that nothing's going to ever happen there. We all know you can't assume anything, so what does this look like now? So is this like wooded? Is it gravel? Is it brush?
Wooded.
It's wooded.
Partially wooded, partially brush. Do you get it?
So like the likelihood, this is just my thought process, okay? The likelihood of someone going in there right now and, what's to attract them to go in there? Nothing. Whereas if the road is there, you're driving down the road. A kid could get dropped off, a, you know, a kid could be riding a bicycle, anything could happen. If this were to come further, I'd like to see somehow the liability addressed because that's my only issue when I look at this. And umbrellas are great, but umbrellas do not prevent the lawyer from suing everyone and anyone. It just helps the person who has the umbrella have more protection than everyone else. So that being said, you know, I don't know if it's, I'm not telling you how to do your job, but, you know, in a perfect world, you'd get all the neighbors to sign off and agree that this is a great plan. That would make it a no-brainer. But I, I do have an issue with, in my eyes, creating a liability.
Kate?
Why, and I certainly, I'm sorry.
I'll jump in.
Yeah.
If they made it a public road, then that would all go away.
I agree 100%, absolutely. Yep, if it were a public road, there's no issue. But that requires, you know, different things, so more cost and everything else. So that's all. I'm just throwing my thoughts at you. That's what you asked for tonight, I think.
It's exactly what we asked for, yes.
Because I have no problem with them building a house there. I have no problem with all of that. It's just the liability's really hanging me up.
Yeah, I, I hear you loud and clear. Let us give a little thought to how we could address that. I'm, I'm confident there's a way we can address that, but let us just give a little thought to that.
It's fair.
There's no wetlands with the road, with the, this part of the road.
No, not at all. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a good piece of land as far as developing. There's no weapons, it's degraded good. I believe the soils are sandy.
They're good.
Yeah, so, so from all those aspects, grading and all that sort of thing, it's a pretty easy parcel to build on.
Are there rounds at the end of the street?
Excuse me?
Are there rounds at the end of the street?
Rounds?
Yeah.
We've, we've proposed raises at the end of the street, yeah.
Is that cutting into the, I mean, the neighboring lots or?
No, we're able to do that within either the 40-foot right of way of Sycamore Road and the right of way of, of, of High Street. So we're able to get the pavement roundings within the rights of way. And again, this plan hasn't been, you know, completely vetted. We'd want to talk to Carl and we'd want to make sure that the fire department is comfortable, that their apparatus is able to make the maneuvers correctly.
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, I echo Katie, but just last thing is, on a private road, are you held to the same necessities as a, as a public? Meaning, street lighting, hydrants?
No, and that's, and that's what we would hope to kind of accomplish and work with your board on in terms of waivers. What minimum standards should there be for a private way in terms of width, you know, cross-section, pavement depths, all that sort of thing? Those are things that we would work with you and through Carl and Carl.
Again, I mean, thinking of the neighbors, we're assuming that they would prefer not to have streetlights going up along with, right? So that, that was part of the reason for our thinking of, if we do it privately, we can maybe simplify the design.
I should, but it's like, you know, no, no lighting, more chance for accidents, right? Lighting, you know, less chance for accident possibly, but, you know, but then you're right then. I mean, it, it looks like it's going to go down to the people that abut this. right then. I mean, it looks like it's going to go down to the people that abut this road, right?
Yeah.
Getting their approval is going to be key.
Did you talk to the neighbors?
We came to you folks first.
No, okay. Yeah, I mean, that would, that's all I see. I mean, if these people...
I mean, at the end of the day, what we would hope is that this looks like a glorified, you know,
Driveway.
single-family driveway. If there was going to be any lighting, you know, we prefer that they be, you know, lamp posts like you have a simple family home and not, you know, 40-foot high LEDs in the sky.
But with the understanding that those people don't look at that new household, old, you know, house homeowner at the end here and say that it's, well, it's their driveway, right? Because it's still, at the end of the day, it's going to be a road.
It's going to be a road, but I think at the end of the day, it will be perceived by most people as a driveway.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And I think that's really what, what we would like, that, you know, it's perceived as a private driveway so that, you know, other than the Amazon truck, you know, you don't have people going down there.
No, but, but again, but when you, when you make that perception, right, then you're going to try to hold that single household, home, liable for everything.
Exactly. And that's what, I think that is the intent of that single homeowner who builds his house is liable for everything in terms of maintaining that.
Okay. And I would just add that I would fully anticipate after we're done here this evening, assuming we're going back to the drawing board a little bit, and Rob said, consulting Carl and the commissioner and maybe some other town officials, having conversations with those neighbors before we formally file anything. I would absolutely expect that would be part of the process for us.
So for the neighbors that are already, I guess they would be on Joe Avenue, the, on the side?
Other side.
Yeah. So they would now have a street on both, you know, they'd have a right-of-way on one side and a street on the other side. So would you try to do some screening or something?
I think, I think again, that's something that we would work with your board on to see what you think is appropriate.
And if I-
On that, because we talked about it before, but it's, there's 40 feet there. If you're creating a 20-foot driveway, you can leave the trees on, you can leave the trees on your side of the driveway. The lots are already open.
Yeah, and I, and I would add that I think that would be part of what we would want to talk to those neighbors about. You know, to Rob's point earlier, if they say, hey, this is great, I've got my trailer out there and, you know, every other week when I'm heading, heading out, I can just kind of wheel it out here. It's going to be easier than, they would, they would have the right to do that. If they say, you know what, we understand you can do this, but we don't want to look at it. Can you put up a stockade fence or some plantings? Then we would certainly account for that as well. So I think-
So are there large trees on that land now or?
There are some.
There are trees, yeah. I don't think, yeah.
So it would be to be clearing.
The driveway is all trees. The lots are clear. The lots are open.
I just think that would make a big difference to those, to those lots.
Yeah, and that's again, I think we'd talk to them and see what their preferences would be and try to satisfy them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Quick question.
Yes?
How is this going to be filed?
What do you mean, how is it going to be filed?
What is it going to come as? A subdivision modification, new subdivision?
No, no, well.
Site plan?
They're waiting here patiently.
Okay.
Don't worry. All right. I'm well acquainted with derelict fees. I've been going through it for the last seven years with one of more prominent developers in Walpole. Question, would you, would you consider that an easement or a road?
It would be a road built over.
No, no, not, not what it would be. What is it now? What is it considered?
Oh, technically, I would call it an easement because the road isn't built.
Then you got issues with that because I've been fighting that is, would you be overburdening the easement? If it is an easement, my opinion, yes, because it has nothing there. And if you add a house to it, you've overburdened it.
I would say it's an easement for a roadway, maybe to put a more specific point on my-
When you come back, that's a question that needs to be answered from a legal standpoint. If it's an easement, you familiar with the overburdening law?
Sure, yep.
All right, and if you add that other lot to it, you can't add anything more, either land or building. So you're doing both, all right? So you're going to have to get that one.
I'm sorry, could you, I just, I'm not sure I followed that last point.
You read the Mass Law, overburdening easement is if, say if that road was, was just an easement, if you add a piece of property to that, you've taken away your rights on your easement.
Okay, I understand what, yeah.
Okay, the same thing if you add a building to it. Say you didn't add any land, you had a building, you're over, meaning it's beyond what it was originally intended for.
And, and I would just, and we're happy to flesh this out with the subsequent filing, but Sycamore Street was originally designated as a road to service these parcels.
Okay.
Right, so I, that's why I say it's technically now an easement, but it's an easement allowing access to these parcels, so.
Well, that's why it's, that's why I'm raising that question.
Understood.
These come up. Now, the other problem you have right off the bat is, as we, as you know, after eight years, a plan has to, it's no longer good. So any zoning change or anything to that effect, it has to be up to the current standards. So we have a 46-foot right-of-way, not 40. All right, so that's, that's one. The other thing you're going to have to look at is, is this a single lot subdivision? Because the way I'm looking at it right now, it is. There are no such thing as a single lot subdivision. I know you can read in the book, there's some one in Nantucket that was so weird that I've read, but I've been down this road here. Single lot subdivisions are not allowed, all right? And probably the most important one is you have to show to us that you can build this out 100% without a waiver. So you're going to give us a plan that shows this a full build-out, all rules and regs. You with me on that?
Just so I'm clear, we need to be able to demonstrate we could build it without a waiver, but we could-
Without any waivers.
But we could then request waivers.
Yeah, but you have to show it that you can do this without a waiver. If you need a waiver to do it, it's not a, typically the waivers used to be like, I don't want to use granite curb, I want to use asphalt bed, or I don't want to have sidewalks on both sides. All you got to do is show us there and we could say yes or no. But you've got to show us and demonstrate that you can do this 100%, which is going to include a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, Jack, there was a plan that we considered in 2019. It was a temporary, a preliminary, preliminary plan, informal plan that came to us in August 2019.
Yeah.
That was for a two-house subdivision.
Yeah.
Two houses.
Two, a new house, yeah.
Yeah, and they had the cul-de-sac and everything.
You know, it never went anywhere, but that was the-
But I don't think it showed the 40 feet though. It's, I think, I think it only showed 40, it didn't show the full 46.
It did not, yeah.
Correct, it was 40.
40 feet, and that's why-
Yeah, it was 40 feet.
Because we've had that down the road. Other, we've got a lot of 40-foot stubs, like every other town does, whatever it was, back there. And I know, you know, that's been a sticking point. A lot of people have been able to buy, it's usually one, like this one lot in and they're able to get it, but you have to demonstrate you can do the full 100% rules and regs to this date. And then you'd ask for waivers after that.
So they have to show that you get the 46 feet?
They got to show everything, yeah. Cul-de-sacs and everything else. You have to show the full, whatever, what's our radius, Kyle? 100-something?
104 on the property line, 88 on the curb.
See, that's another one I, well, you guys can figure, I suppose, well, Kyle, I'll throw it out to you now, is, we're going by 1904 plan, which I understand you got to conform to it. So we're basically working within that. You can't necessarily go off that to create the cul-de-sac, can you, on their property? Wouldn't it deem that this is a not the same? You follow?
Uh, not exactly. I think you could.
What I'm saying, Kyle, is right now in 1904, it shows it going like this. I don't disagree with that and I know that. But now they would have to show a cul-de-sac that's going off that. That doesn't enjoy, it's a whole new subdivision.
So that goes back to what we're filing this under. And either way, whether it was a new subdivision or a modification, I believe you could then-
Well, you can't modify something that was never built.
Okay, so it'll be a new subdivision. You could create roadway
I know you could create, I-
that isn't there.
I'm not here to belabor, I need, if you guys come back, you have to have all the answers. Right now, I understand, say this is 46 feet, you could do it tomorrow, not a problem. But now if you need that cul-de-sac, you no longer enjoy the 1904 grandfather. You've now had to take other property beyond the 1904.
I'm not sure I agree with that. I understand your point. I also would just add, I do, we'll look at it, right? But I suspect we would be able to put a cul-de-sac largely onto a portion of the consolidated lots.
No, I know where you can put it. My point from a legal standpoint is now have you overridden what was done in 1904?
My opinion would be no, but we can substantiate that.
Actually be modifying, it actually would be a modification to a, a plan, right, Kyle?
I guess. The question is, was it created by a planning board in the first place? And that would be no.
No. Yeah, but it, but the rules are, you got to conform to the most updated, the way it is.
If you modify.
Yeah. So they're going to have to show that. I'm throwing these out. You get the answers? I don't care. I just want to have you have the questions so you don't come here one night and go, oh.
No, I appreciate it. This is exactly why we're here.
Yeah, so that's something to consider, is, does it, does it still get the grandfather if you start taking more area for your road? And let's see, yeah, the one-lot subdivision, the plan, cul-de-sac. Yeah, that was, those are the, my sticking point, I don't, you know, trees, whatever you're doing, that's down the road. These are kind of the big hurdles first to get over first. And if you do, if you do get that far, there's plenty of, as I've said to other guys, just go look what's been done on private roads before. Don't create your own private road, meaning draw it up. Go see what we've done. A lot of guys start out with 16. Why'd you do that? Fire department says you got to have 20. So why, don't think you do this and then go do that. But that's down the road. You got a little bit of homework on this.
Okay. I think that answers our questions, Rob?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. We really appreciate it.
Bye.
Well, Rob, good to see you, Rob.
Nice to see you guys.
Good to see you, Rob.
It's really doing pretty good. Appreciate what Paul said because I've been trying to ride like 15, 20 miles a day on my bike to strengthen up my legs.
Attaboy.
And had a couple of close encounters in driveways.
You understand, right?
Yeah, I absolutely do.
Good night. Good night.
Thank you all. Good night.
All right. Is that it? Is that it? Okay.
No, no.
What?
What do you want to do with Lucoprosy's Warwick Road release of comments from town?
Since he's suing us, did we get the okay that you can do that or?
I, I just put on the agenda, any word here.
All right, well, we'll wait and see what happens.
I'll add it to the next agenda.
Yeah. All right, nothing else? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
No second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.